2023, and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad the flag is in the right place this time, and I had my glasses on, make sure. So again, good evening. We are going, if anybody here would like to speak tonight, we need to swear you in. So, any of those who want to speak tonight, remember to address all comments and questions to the Chair. Keep your comments brief and on point. If you agree with a previous comment, just state that you agree and move on. To expedite tonight's meeting, I will ask those who wish to testify or believe they might like to testify, please stand and be sworn in. Applicants as well. Thank you. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do. Thank you. You may be seated, obviously. Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parkinson?
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Here.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Here.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Here.
Commissioner Preston?
Here.
Chair McLean.
Here. Thank you. All right, our first thing on the agenda is a continued case, 23-100-04, rezoning of 10110 East 23rd Street South and 2214 South Maywood Avenue. Can I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Chair McLean.
Yes. Continued case 23104. Is there a date for that?
It says it's withdrawn.
Oh, it's withdrawn. Sorry, you're right. You're right, you're right. Okay. Our first case is case 23-125-04, rezoning 916 and 1004 West 23rd Street from C2 and R12 to C2-PUD and 910, 920, 922 West 23rd Street and 1130 South Cottage Street from C2 to C2-PUD. Staff, please give us a report, please.
Yes, this is a request by Hilda Ramirez to rezone these multiple properties that existed from C2 and R12 to C2-PUD and approve a preliminary development plan. This case was originally before the commission, way back in January, and it was continued a couple of times to let the applicant come up with a better site plan, I'll put it that way. In meetings with the applicant, it was also decided to change the request from a C3, which is service commercial, to a C2, general commercial, PUD, planned unit development. And so it was given a new case number. Most of what's in the staff report is unchanged. The background history and all that stuff is obviously the same. I'll touch on some of that quickly here. The segment of 23rd Street corridor was a strip-zoned commercial and industrial as far back as the mid-'60s. In this case, the commercial zoning went back 200 feet from the right away. Properties north of this strip were zoned, single or two-family residential. In this section of 23rd Street, both sides of the frontage were zoned C2 or C3. Land uses in this area are generally service uses on the south with religious and educational uses mixed in. And the residential uses behind the corridor are primarily single-family homes constructed in the first half of the last century. The comprehensive plan envisions residential urban neighborhoods of this site. Like many arterials in the city, the southern 200 feet of the applicant's properties along 23rd Street have been zoned commercial since at least November 1965. There is part of the property, the north end of the property is actually zoned R12, which was previously R2, which is two-family dwelling. Ms. Ramirez purchased these six lots. It comprises application in the fall of 2021 for her business, Royal Stone Landscaping. The business sells materials such as dirt, gravel, mulch, river rock, decorative rock and bulk amounts to the public with service delivery available. Shortly after the purchase, the company began preparing the northern, the southern portion of the site for the business, graveling part of the site for parking and driving areas, creating bin enclosures with concrete barriers for merchandise and accepting the delivery of some materials for future sale. Relocating the site will allow the company to consolidate and expand its operations. If the rezoning is approved, the owner will have to submit a final development plan for administrative review and approval, then construction permit for the various improvements. Okay, we'll go through this, some of the slideshow here. Again, this is the northwest corner of West 23rd Street and South College. This shows the location, shows the configuration of the lots here. So you've got this big lot that comes primarily north of 23rd Street there, and then you've got a couple, or at least one small lot that comes out on the college. This shows the zoning of the property. Again, that is the shape of the lot. They're sort of an L shape with the lower portion, probably 40% being commercial, and the northern part being R12, two-family dwelling. This is the comprehensive plan, again, shows us as a residential neighborhood zoning or use, I'll put it that way. Okay, some characteristics of the area, we just talked about that. Talked about that. Okay, here's the first page of the site plan. This is the preliminary development plan, actually. Again, shows the L shape of the property. You've got one drive entrance on the 23rd Street that you exit and enter on, and it goes to a paved parking lot there to the right. That is the darker area. And then straight ahead is the gravel area where the bins are that the materials are stored in. On the right side of the property, or the east side, there is a small office building. How do you call it? It's like a 40 by 40 or something like that, office building. And then they also seek to put a couple of shipping containers there with a canopy over them for their, to store their equipment and some merchandise, I would guess. This is the preliminary grading and detention plan. The oval shape that's north of the parking area there, or the bin area is the detention basin. And just north of that, with a kind of a squiggle line, is actually the line for the stream buffer. So you can see the detention basin is just out of the stream buffer. And here is the building and landscaping plan. Again, you can see the small buildings, those two little boxes down on the corner there, just before it makes the L shape. Then you've got landscaping around the southeast sides, the south being along 23rd Street, where they have to do street trees, and then the buffer along the east side of the lots where there are residential uses. They've shown a building that is the top picture or illustration there. It looks kind of like a country cabin sort of feel. And then next, a potential sign design. And then the bottom one being the shipping containers with a kind of a hoop canopy over the middle of them to provide some cover for some things that are not put in the shipping containers. So, some of the features in this plan that was not shown in the other one was they eliminated the driveway onto Cottage Street and relocated the 23rd Street Drive to align with Windsor Avenue just south of the site. The provisions of building designs for the office and the storage containers, which you can see here on this elevation, the office, a 400 square foot wood frame structure with the appearance of a country cabin. Shipping containers will house some of the company's equipment, such as a backhoe and bobcat. That sort of thing will fit in a shipping container. And then the plan does show the stream buffer on the north end of the site, the location of the detention basin, and some primarily, some primary grading for the site. And a storm water management outline was also included, and the outline is provided in your report. They also provided, again, the landscaping plan with the fencing as shown on the east and south sides of the site. They did provide some discussion of dust containment management will be provided for the bins, which store products that could become airborne. Obviously, rocks and things like that will not be but dirt and will be. It's anticipated the business will employ two to three people onsite with business hours being 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday. Royal Stone estimates it will be conducting 70% onsite sales and 30% delivery sales. Initially intends to provide deliveries with a truck and trailer, but plans to acquire a small dump truck at a later date for its delivery needs. Okay, we go through some photographs here. This is, actually, these photographs were taken back in January. Nothing's really changed out there. There's some leaves on the trees, but everything else is the same. Here, we're on the south side of 23rd Street, looking north into the site. Here, we're looking west into the property from the side street there. You can see where they've actually had the road was blocked off with those concrete barriers. These are some of the bins that are on the site now. Some more of the bins. And here, we're looking north, probably about where the driveway will come into the site, where that little shipping container down there is probably close to where the others will be eventually with the office building just south of that. Here is a picture looking to the east, towards the cottage, down there where the other building is. 23rd Street is off to the left. Here, we're looking north up South Cottage Avenue. And this is the house that's immediately north of the site on Cottage. So the driveway is going to come out onto College, just south of this building. And here is another building to the, another home to the northeast across South Cottage. And this is an auto repair business directly east of the site on 23rd Street. And then several buildings that are to the south side of 23rd Street there. It's an academy of education. It's a church there. This is a construction contractor and another church. And this is the commercial property that's to the east of the site. It is, excuse me, to the west of the site. It's an automobile repair business. Staff does recommend approval of this rezoning to C2-PUD and the approval of the preliminary development plan with the following conditions. One, the permissible uses for the property include all C2 uses permitted by right or with a special use permit in accordance with Section 14-704, plus the sale of landscaping materials including river rock, stone, mulch, dirt, and related products. Two is the lots must be consolidated into a single lot prior, through the minor subdivision process, prior to the business license being approved. Three, all business activities are limited to the southern 275 feet of the property to allow for the stream buffer and the construction of the detention basin. Selected minor activities may be permitted north of the 275-foot line with the approval of the community development director. Four is all development and building elevation shall be in accordance with the preliminary development plan. Five is the bins that are subject to dust shall be covered with framed canvas awnings when not in use. Six, the final development plan must include complete building elevations of the office building and canopy, bin canopy based upon the designs shown on the preliminary development plan. The plan must also include details regarding dustbin containment covers, best management practices for storm water management, site lighting, fencing, landscaping, and parking areas. Seven is any trash enclosure must be enclosed in a proper dumpster enclosure per Section 14-50308. Any areas used for parking or storage of the company's employees or company vehicles, such as dump trucks, backhoes, silver, must be a paved surface, and the business hours are limited to 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we bring the applicant up?
Mr.? How can we limit them, their hours or operations?
Well, in this, if this had been a normal situation, we couldn't have really done that. But this being a special use permit, I think that provides us with additional.
So the special use permit lets us regulate the hours that they can operate?
That's, yes.
Because I know, like, the rock lots that I attend to, I like sometimes to go on Sundays when people are off work. That's why I can't understand why they're not letting them be open on Sunday. That's something that, I mean, that's up to them, but I'm just saying, I think if I go to buy mulch someplace, I can go to Menards or places like that, they're open on Sunday. So that's why I can't see how we can regulate their hours.
Well, their original request was just Monday through Friday.
That's fine. Well, that's up to them.
And I suggested that they be open on Sunday, on Saturday.
Right. Well, that's up to them. But I'm just saying, if they start opening up on Sunday, then we are restricting them from doing that. And I don't, I don't want to get into a legal problem with something like that happening. So that's why I'm a little wary about that.
That's something we can discuss with the applicant is.
Okay.
If we remember who, if we remember who the neighbors are, there are several churches that are across or to the south of 23rd Street.
That's right.
And it's something about Sunday that churches are usually in session. So it would make good sense that if we can control restricted hours, then we should control restricted hours. But I wanted to address that portion, item number six in the stipulations. Part of the permitting process would be dust containment, and that is within the permitting process that.
That would be turned in as far as part of the building permit. They will need building permit for the paving and the installation of the building and waterline extension to the building, I would guess, or around the side.
So we don't need to get into the weeds on that today?
Yeah, we actually looked at a couple of alternatives on that. We've got the thing where they put the bin covers over the dust to keep it from flying around. And then there's also sort of a sprinkler setup that goes off on occasion to keep the material damp, so it doesn't fly around. So I think what they were looking at is more of the cover it when not in use, but that they would need to come up with a design that would work.
A lot of stipulations. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, one more question.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Stuart, on number eight. So, under a C2, they can store dump trucks and backhoes outside?
Well, I think that we would have to look at that as part of their, part of the PUD part of this business. Normally, that wouldn't be permitted.
Right.
But this is because of this type of business, I mean, that would be included in the use, permitted uses. And I don't think that's their intent to store that outside. I think they want to store everything they can inside. But when it's, when it's not, it really needs to be on a paved surface. That includes employee vehicles as well.
Good question, Stuart. I mean, go ahead.
The, one other thing I'm concerned about, I know you guys are going to work on the dust. If they have a rock yard where they drive around, it's going to create a lot of dust. My opinion is that if they want to do this, it needs to be like regular places that, and the whole place needs to be paved. And that's where I'm going to stand up right now. I said the whole place is going to have to be paved for me to prove this. So I'm just letting you know.
Okay, let's bring the applicant up so they can speak to. Yes.
Did you not state that, that portion, where the bins or the storage bins or the employee parking and other designated, that would all be paved asphalt, concrete, hard surface?
As you look at this slide, only the dark area on this slide here is the, will be paved with a hard surface. We're requesting that they have employee vehicles parking north of the little, little office building and the shipping container area, that that area also be paved. But the rest of it will be gravel surface.
Are you good with that?
Staff did not seem to have issue with it because it's not really a parking area. It's more like a yard, so to speak. It would require a change, significant change in storm water management if this were a paved area because you've got a lot of coverage there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the applicant come forward, please? If you'll state your name and your address, please.
My name is Carla Ramos, and my, a little higher, okay. My name is Carla Ramos, and I am currently here representing Royal Stone Landscape Materials. My current address is 9035 Northeast 101st Street, Kansas City, Missouri, 64157.
Thank you.
First of all, I wanted to say thank you for having us here and for taking us into consideration. And we look forward to being able to make this street, this area, just a little bit brighter to look at. Currently, it kind of sits a little bit sad, but we want to bright it, make it a little bit brighter. And we looked over the staff report, and we feel pretty confident in the responses and that we're going to be able to make the changes in order to provide the, all the needs that the city might ask of us. So we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Can you, you heard some of the concerns.
I did.
Do you want to go ahead and?
I did. So what we had, kind of had in mind is the reason why we were hoping that the gravel would be sufficient in the areas where the boxes will be is because we actually will have trucks that will come in and be dumping on this ground. We're going to be using your bigger rock possibly even for overlaying it with maybe like some AB3, which will diminish that dust. With that, it also gives a little hardened feel. And also too, that if a dump truck or a bigger truck comes in and kind of knocks the stuff around, we're able to pack it back down and bring it back to, to the normal resistance of what we currently have. If we were to asphalt that, there would be tons of, like, nicks into that and it would be hard to keep up with the fact that these big trucks would be coming in to deliver mulch and other, other materials to us. So we figured that that would be the best route in order to keep it for long-term care. And obviously, providing the parking and in front of where the building will be laying, we'll be having, of course, the asphalt because we feel that that is the safest for everybody, the customer as well as ourselves. So, you know, we kind of were hoping that that would be sufficient. And of course, if any added things that we need to do, whether it's keeping moist or adding some covers, we're willing to do that to help to keep that down as well as adding some, some grass around the areas to keep the dust and the flowing and also any other added landscaping. Our goal is to kind of simulate something that when somebody does come, a customer does come on our property, that they look around and they say, hey, that looks really nice. Did you guys do that? And we're like, yeah, we sure did, and here's what we have. And it'll kind of show them what is out there, what we can do and what's available in order for them to make their homes simulate a beautiful environment, a beautiful setting for them, a relaxing setting. So when you are driving by these homes, you can see, hey, even our homeowners are benefiting from the product that we provide for them. So we're excited to do that for the city and its, and its residents.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Staff made a rather extensive list of stipulations that would be required. Do you take exception to any of the stipulations so stated?
We are definitely, we, in reading over the staff report, and we go, you know, I read one, two, three, and so on. And I look at it, and I'm like, it's totally stuff that we can work with. It's not, I, there wasn't one that I read, and I was like, oh, no, that's it, we can't do it. No, it's all something that we can definitely work with and get to a common ground, for sure.
So all this stated here during the permitting process, you don't see a problem with?
I feel we can work with it, and we'll be willing to.
Thank you.
Well, we have some flexibility there, but I don't know where she means, where does she want to go with, we can work with it. I mean, if the rezoning was approved with this list and this design, then that's where we go. I mean, it's not like we can approve this and later we'll make, you know, there's some flexibility making alterations to a plan, but there's, this is not just, this is not a sketch plan, we'll change it later type of thing. This is it. I just want to make that understood, that this isn't just a concept.
No, definitely, we'll stay within the parameters of what your request, and obviously, the changes will be minor. It's not going to be anything major, but we know that in order for this to move forth, we have to meet your requirements there, and we're willing to do that for you and for us as well.
Do you have that in front of you, the recommendations?
I don't, actually.
So maybe, yeah, let's get you that so that you can definitively say that you're comfortable with that so that we can be comfortable with that.
Okay, let's see.
Stuart, do you want to go down the list again and let her nod off? Because it's rather extensive.
Okay. Number one, the permissible uses for this property include all C2 uses permitted by right or with a special use permits, special use permit in accordance with Section 14-704, plus the sale of landscaping materials including river rock, stone, sand, mulch, dirt, and related products. Number two is.
Do you agree, you stipulate to that?
That's, yes, that's correct.
Okay, the lots will be consolidated into a single lot through the minor subdivision process prior to a business license being approved.
And we're okay with that.
Number three is all business activities are limited to the southern 275 feet of the property to allow for the stream buffer and the construction of the detention basin. Selected minor activities may be permitted north of the 275-foot line with the approval of the community development director.
We're okay with that.
Number four is all development and building elevation shall be in accordance with the preliminary development plan.
Yes, we're okay with that.
Okay, five is bins that are subject to dust shall be covered with a framed canvas awnings when not in use.
We're okay with that.
Number six, the final development plan must include complete building elevations of the office building and bin canopies based upon the designs shown on the preliminary development plan. The final development plan must also include details regarding the dustbin containment covers, best management practices for storm water management, site lighting, fencing, landscaping, and parking areas.
And we're okay with that.
Stuart, hold on there. Now, she knows that you guys, you're going to have to make her put a bunch of trees around, correct? Is that correct?
Yes, that's the landscaping plan. That would be part of the building permit process.
I just want to make sure she's aware. Now, what size fence are we recommending that they put up? Just an eight-foot or a 10-foot?
Well, I think that we didn't really put an issue on that. We would go with an eight or a six. I mean, either way, they're going to have to have a permit to do it.
Right. But I didn't know if that's something that we already rules or not.
I don't know that we really had an issue here with that. Hang on. Well, we don't really have a, either an eight or a six, at least a six.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at number seven is any trash dumpster must be enclosed within a proper dumpster enclosure per city code Section 14-50308.
And we're okay with that.
Okay, number nine is any areas used for parking, storage of employees or company vehicles must be on a paved surface.
We're okay with that.
And then the business hours being 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday.
And that works for us as well.
Perfect, thank you. I felt like we needed, to make sure we're all on the same page on that, so thank you, Stuart. I had a. I had a question about the stream. I wasn't here last time, so you all probably know the answer, but will the materials be far enough away that they're not like leaking into the stream in any way or?
Yes, that is correct. How many feet off there?
How far away are the, the bins like from the stream? Is it far enough away that it's not going to leak? Can you give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, sure. Kevin Starrett, HG Consult, fourteen eleven Northeastide, George Lee Summit.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, we're actually, uh, from the, uh, the bins and the gravelled area, we then go into the detention area. And then from the stream buffer, I, I don't know exactly the dimension, but I'd say it's about fifty or sixty feet. The whole distance across the detention pond.
Okay. I don't know a lot about that, but that's safe enough that nothing's going to drizzle into the stream, correct?
Yes, when we get to the final development plan, we'll provide more detail of how we're doing the containment and everything as we, as we use that for the storm management plan.
Okay, just as long as you're not ignoring that.
No problem.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Question for Stuart. On four and five, where it talks about the coverage for the dust of the bins, you had mentioned some kind of sprinkler system that could be used instead. Is that, is it covers required when they're not in use period? Or should this say or approved system?
It was, uh, I understand that, I think the bin option was the easier of the two.
Okay.
Cheaper of the two because you don't have to water everywhere and, uh, you know, for that.
I just want to make sure the option was there if the applicant wanted it, so.
Thank you.
There, there's other options with that as well, whether it be you're watering down the gravelled area. You can also use different chemicals that control dust and, uh, stuff like that too. So there's, there's options for that. We even might use a rock that's got a lot less fines in it so that, uh, you know, you don't have as much of it getting kicked up. As far as that goes, we've even got that. I think we even mentioned that on our plan that we were talking about doing that.
So with the stipulations, I don't feel comfortable that those options are in there.
We could amend, uh, are you concerned about the dust that would come from the bins or from the drives?
The.
Both.
Well, both, but, but really it was more about the bins saying they had to have covers. And if they choose a, a chemical option, I want them to be able to have that option.
I, could you elaborate on that? Because I don't know that you talked about using that for the bins.
Yeah, I think we got two different things going here.
Okay.
For the gravel area that tends to, you know, kick up dust, that's where I was talking about different treatments there.
Okay.
For the bins, yeah, those can be covered, all of them regardless of whether, what, what we're doing. So those are two different.
Okay.
Containment options is what we're talking about there.
So do you feel comfortable that the containment option for the gravel is in this stipulations?
Yeah.
For the sales, sales areas.
Commissioner Nesbit, any questions?
Well, you guys say that it is covered in the stipulations for the gravel area. It is not covered in here. Right now, all you have is covering the bins and you don't have anything in here for the gravel. That's why I'm against it because the gravel area needs to be paved because that's where most of your dust is going to be kicked up. I'm sorry to say, yes, bobcats and stuff will make dents in the asphalt. That's why you have to put it down thick enough. But that is where I'm at with my problem because you're going to make a lot of dust around that area. I see it at other places. It happens all the time. So there's no way to get around that without asphalt nor concrete in the place. So that's why I'm at my stipulation saying that it needs to be totally paved. I mean, the rock bin areas, yes, the only ones that's going to make dust when it's just sitting there is going to be your dirt. Your rock usually doesn't blow dust around. I know you don't have to put covers on that. It's just the dirt that you have to put on when you have winds up that blows the dust around. So that's where I'm standing at, that it's got to have the areas of the drive areas paved so that it does make dust when people are driving around loading up trucks, your bobcats are in there, moving around stuff. I know they dig it up. I see it happens. It happens when I go to these places, so.
Why don't you explain a three, four inch compacting nature of AB3?
Um, AB3, yeah, that's a, that's a mix that has fines in it, but it's used for putting down your initial, uh, base. But then on top of that, we could definitely be looking at a, uh, like a three-quarter inch clean kind of deal. Again, getting most, a lot of the dust that, it's just getting a better grade of rock is what it is. Uh, we use it all the time on various projects like that. You know, with that and, you know, calcium chloride can be put on it and, uh, chip and seal can be put on it. Uh, but then with all the, uh, uh, screening that we're putting around there to catch anything that gets in the air, plus the covers over the bins, I think we've got a pretty good, uh, you know, addressing that and doing as best we can. If you've all ever been out to Randy's Lakeview Nursery out in Colburn, we kind of, uh, uh, kind of mimicking that just a little bit with all the, the screening and the, and the landscaping and the, the country, the little country place. We're kind of mimicking that a little bit if you've ever been out there and seen that place. They're, they're the same business, you know, bulk materials, both you can come in and pick it up there, but also you can have it delivered kind of a deal. Same concept.
Stuart, while he's here, tell me your concerns about dust on the non-paved portion where the storage bins will be. Do you think we can, you can manage that as presented?
Well, uh, I was just talking to, uh, to Rick about this and, uh, we could potentially add another condition where we would say the, uh, drive parking areas would be chip and seal or, or the, or some sort of chemical seal or other.
You can insert that language for us?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to come up with it.
I'm sure you can get counsel to write something. Hi, counsel?
What was the question?
That Stuart is going to write in the stipulations something about chip and seal. And I figured, you know, you would be the perfect person to write that.
Sounds like a plan.
Stuart, do you want him to write that for you or you'll write it?
If you would like to, that's fine.
No, I, I just want it done. We're paying him fourteen hundred dollars an hour, aren't we? So let's get our money's worth.
Well, we could put something about, uh, chip and seal, chemical seal or others, or other satisfactory treatment.
Perfect.
You know, approved by the community development department. Shall be applied to all drive and, you know, parking areas, whatever, that's something like that. I don't really have the language all figured out right now, but.
But you'll have it.
If that's where you're going with it.
You know that's where we're going.
Okay.
You two discuss. We trust.
How do you feel about that additional stipulation?
Well, it was, it was, it was, uh, her, her, her coach that made that recommendation.
We can definitely. We can definitely do that.
Okay. So we're changing subjects a little bit. Where will the machinery be, um, stored?
It'll be kind of, um, where the parking, as you come into, where the office will be. They'll probably just sit a little bit north of the office, kind of close to the office because our goal obviously is far, as far as surveillance to keep, we'd like to add something like that. Um, and if it's doable, if, if not, no big deal. But we figure the closer they are to the buildings, the less likely of people ransacking or taking, um, I don't know, copper or anything like that out of the equipment. It just, it's going around.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
What if we put a stipulation in that you do have to have covered area or enclosed area for all your equipment? Is that going to be a problem?
Um, no, we can, we can figure, we can do that.
I mean, that would be more sense to me. That way it's all inside at nighttime and then nobody's there, so.
We can add something like that.
You mentioned, you mentioned it in there somewhere.
Well, he mentioned it, but then he said, go ahead, Stuart.
Well, I, I, you know, initially they said that, uh, the, uh, bobcat would be stored in a shipping container because they said it just fits in one of those.
It fits perfect in there.
And, uh, if they're going to have a trailer to haul the materials initially and then later a dump truck, uh, I don't know that those can fit inside a, a shipping container, so.
Well, now you're going, now you're going on putting a shipping container there. Is that legal? Looks in the City of Independence on new construction?
Well, we.
I mean, doesn't it have to be a building with brick on it so far up in the front or something like that?
Um, I don't think we've ever ran across anything like this before. Uh, we do require the main office to be of the.
I mean, because we had somebody come in and request putting shipping containers to store stuff in and we turned it down over on Forty Highway. So that's why I know.
I remember that, uh.
Yeah.
Case, um, but that was a little bit different because the whole project was going to be shipping.
Well, and a whole project, but still, we're talking about shipping containers that are not up to code standards. What I'm saying, I guess, what I'm bringing up, because now we got new construction. I mean, we had a case come up before, I think, something about they put up a Butler Building and didn't put the right fascia on it. So I'm just saying, that's, comes up through codes and stuff. So if they're going to put something to store stuff in, it's probably going to have to come up with fascia coverings and everything so it meets the standards. That's what my opinion is.
I think the commissioner is on point.
Well, we could, uh, uh, require that the containers be closed within a, you know, a faux building, so to speak. I mean.
Would it be, um, would it be sufficient for you guys if maybe we modified our office building and to the office building, maybe making it a little bit bigger and adding maybe a roll-up with, you know, how you have a shop that is part of it, maybe a roll-up where you drive everything in there and then roll down and it's part of your office building so it kind of flows with the look?
Yes, that sounds very presentable because I mean, I'm sure that's what's up to codes. If councilor, I'm sure we have something like that in our books.
There is, and I, I recall the situation that you're referring to with, it was, uh, some sort of construction company. I don't remember exactly that had built a building and whether or not what they had to have. So I don't remember the details, but yes, certainly what you're proposing now.
Maybe a little bit easier.
It sounds like it's, you know, certainly in compliance and.
And more aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly.
Pleasing to the eyes a little bit better and kind of will fall into that. And we could just add, you know, um, a bay per se with the pull-up door and it's just going to add a certain footage to the office.
Right. I mean, that's, that's fine however you guys build it, but I'm just saying that's what needs to be there, not a storage container because we don't like storage containers.
We don't like to see that.
Because I mean, that's just an eyesore, in my opinion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Hey, uh, I was not listening to all that. Can you run that by me? Is it, so you're not going to have the shipping containers, you're going to enlarge the office to have like double garage doors?
Yeah, like a garage door.
Okay.
And then drive everything in and garage door closed and I'll have, we'll have.
Will, will staff work with the applicant as per the material used on the exterior of the building?
Sure. What they have provided here on your, on your, uh, drawing, on the drawing with the little country cabin, I guess you could call it, uh, it generally meets the codes. I mean, it's all wooden structure. It's, it's, it's nice, attractive. Uh, it's not too big and it's, it's fine. I mean, if they could just take that plan and enlarge it to add two garage doors onto the side of it, that's fine. I don't think that's a significant enough change to.
Should we probably, should that not be incorporated into the stipulations that that area for equipment would be housed in an extension of the office building?
Uh, okay, let me.
How do you, how do you?
Let me look at this a minute, um.
How about the two thousand dollar per hour attorney right there?
Well, number, number eight says any areas used for the parking, storage of employees or company vehicles, i.e. dump trucks, baccos, must be on a, a paved surface. So we could add to that, you know, must be on a, you know, paved and enclosed. Must be on a paved surface and enclosed. Would that be adequate?
That same, counsel, are you satisfied with your language?
I'm satisfied with that language. I think to Commissioner Nesbit's point, I don't know that the, that the, uh, the storage container would have been approved otherwise. So I don't know that we necess- I mean, I don't think it's necessary to exclude the storage container because I, I don't, I agree with you all. I don't think that's, probably would be approved anyway. So if we just add on a paved surface and in, and add the words and enclosed, I think that would address it.
Thank you.
Stuart, you happy with that?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Well, we can deal with that. Okay, any other questions of the applicant, sir?
I actually would just like to say, um, from January to today, I'm really pleased that the owners have really worked hard to improve this plan.
Well, thank you. We really appreciate it and we've, uh, been working closely with Kevin and we're super satisfied with what he's done for us. So we're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Seeing none, commissioners, you have any more questions of the applicant before I close the public hearing? This public hearing is closed. Any more comments, questions, concerns?
I want to just echo Commissioner El, El Wiley's remarks about the initial presentation and what we've been able to accomplish. And I, I, I correct myself, not we, what you have been able to accomplish in working with staff in, in a very coherent plan. And I, I think Commissioner Nesbit's ideas about the building is absolutely on point. Madam Chair, I, I like the improvements. I really do. I think we're taking an area that was an eyesore and making it productive. And I really like the applicant's comments about the marketing. The aesthetics of their place will transfer into actually increase sales for them. So this is a, this is a good application, great improvements.
I agree.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to go over this against Stuart. Where do we have on the drive areas uh, are going to be paved with something so it's harder service or it keeps the dust? Where's that at?
Okay, this would be number ten.
Be number ten, okay.
Yeah, chip and seal, chemical seal or other satisfactory treatment approved by the community development department.
Okay, my question's going to be then, are we going to double check that it will stay down there when they get bobcats going over there, moving around, things? I mean, I've been to these places. I know how they work. When you do a bobcat turn around, you tear up stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, that's why I'm, that's why I'm leery about this. If it's not on concrete, it's going to tear up. That's why I'm a little leery. That's why I like it to be a paved driveway area. I know it's, it's expensive. That's why I'm saying, if you look at other places, that's what they do. So, I mean, that's why I'm saying no on it because I think everything should be paved to keep the dust down for the neighborhood. I do have a home over in that neighborhood and that's why I don't want to see a bunch of dust flying around. So that's where I'm at.
Can I ask applicant to come back up?
Chair, may I ask applicant to come back up?
Can you just address that one more time? Because if I remember your cohort there.
Yes.
Had said that you used an example from an existing place and you, your plans around that particular issue of the paid versus unpaid matched that.
Yes, that's correct. And also too, it would be something that us being onsite. So whenever something like that does come up, let's just say that there is some, um, scraping of the bobcat or obviously we're going to address it and tend to it. So it's not something that you just lay down once and maybe we can continue to apply or as needed. So it's going to be one of those things where we'd just be on top of it. No problem.
While you're here, and continuing Commissioner Nesbit's concern from where terror, how practical would it be in those areas directly in front of the storage bins where the bobcat is going to pivot and dig? Would it be practical for you to put in concrete there and do a blend those areas where it's just straight drive? No twisting, bending, turning? That be AB3 compacted with whatever rock? Uh, would that be?
Maybe where the bins are.
In front of the bins where you know you're going to pivot.
Right, so where the bins, um, make the U shape, we could lay the concrete first, make the bins around it, fill the bins with material. Right, so where the bins, um, make the U shape, we could lay the concrete first, make the bins around it, fill the bins with material. And so, any of the twisting and turning would happen within the bin space, because they're gonna be pretty long. And so, um, if, if, if we could put the, the composite and the gravel, and then we don't mind doing concrete bases for the bins to help with that, if that would work and we could meet in the middle.
What are the dimensions of the bins so that your bobcat can pivot within the bin? Because that's what Commissioner Nesbit is talking about.
They're like 14 feet wide, maybe, or something like that? Are they 14 or 16?
Yeah, they're, again, yeah, they're like 15. Some of them are, is 15 by 15, others are bigger depending on the material. Uh, some of them may be fairly, they're gonna vary somewhat.
Yeah, I would say the smallest would be 14 feet wide by 15 to 20 feet long, so...
In, in all, in, in other words, in all instances, the width of the bins would be such that...
The bobcat is able to maneuver.
Including the depth, that the bobcat is gonna actually be pivoting...
Inside the bin area.
And when I say pivot, of the hard pivoting, of course, it's gonna pivot at the exit of the bin as it moves back into the loading area. Or will the vehicle or whatever, transport unit, pull along?
They will pull up to the bin area, and then the, 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 the bobcat will inside the bin, grab, and then fill whatever, um, if it's a truck, a, a trailer, will fill from there.
Commissioner Nesbit.
I like that idea. So, you are gonna plant on concrete in each bin there, or you weren't, but now you say you will.
We can do that, so it kind of meets in the middle, and we can concrete bend the inside of it, and then if you're good with that, we'll AB3 and composite and do whatever we have to do around that, too.
That will be much better, because I know that's where the bobcat turns and all the dust and everything brought up there.
We can do that.
That would be much better. I mean, I've seen your bins out there now, so those, those bins there are not what's gonna happen.
And they weren't, um, those were kind of just to contain, um, the material that was being brought to there, but they were nowhere near done, uh, as far as what, what we were planning on for future. It was just kind of sketching it out, like how much space do we actually really have, how wide do we want to make them? And so, just kind of, it's like Lego's playing to see how are we gonna lay these out and what's the best, but, um, that we could do that. We could do the concrete under, on the bottom.
Okay, Stuart, there's number 11.
Well, actually, I just added it to the end of number 10, if that's okay.
Oh, okay.
I just said that all bins will have concrete floors.
Okay, that'll work.
With a minimum width of 14 feet? And I don't know what the minimum depth should be.
Well, again, I think there, there's some of the bins are gonna vary. Uh, some of them will be fairly uniform, but some materials that you don't, you don't sell as much of, so you don't keep as much of it in, so you don't need as big a bin for various things. Things that they sell a lot of, they're gonna want to have a lot of that material available. That will be in the bigger bins. So, they're gonna be able to, be able to move these around to get the bin sizes they need based on the amount of volume of material that they're, that they're selling.
Yeah.
Is it...
Like the, like the mulch bins, um, the trucks that come deliver the mulch, mulch bins are the longer, um, semis. And we, we found that, um, for those bins, doing a longer, so longer, 14 feet, maybe 20 something feet long, that way the truck can kind of just pull through, and as it's pulling through, it dumps the material inside the bin. Then you're not getting the, the material outside the bin, and, and it seemed that if we provided that kind of space for those big trucks, that it just flowed a lot better. So, we would have some that are through and through for the big truck to get through, dump, and then, and then be able to maneuver out of the area there.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes, that sounds perfect.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I was trying to think about colonial hills and gar, colonial gardens, I mean, and I don't think that, I think it's gravel. But, and they have a restaurant there, so I think they're cool with it. Not the Janita Restaurant, I'm saying that.
Let's talk about the restaurant, Madam Chair.
Nope, it's not. Nope. Um... Is there, it's dressed with coffee shop. Is there, um...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Hearing no further comment in the matter of case 23-125-04, rezoning of 916 and 1004 West 23rd Street from C2 and R12 to C2 slash PUD, and 910, 929, 22 West 23rd Street, and 1130 South Cottage Street from C2 to C2 PUD. I move for approval as recommended by staff with the 10 stipulations.
Yeah, and also the preliminary development plan is included with that.
Do, do that again.
The preliminary development plan, which you saw on the screen, is part of that.
With the addendum as so stated by staff.
I second. Thank you. We are ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Case number 23-125-04 has been approved. Thank you and good luck. Okay, next case, 23, case number 23-109, rezoning of 907 and 907 and a half, South Chrisler Avenue. Staff will give a report.
Okay, um, we're looking at the, um, the vicinity map slide for, uh, 907, 907 and a half, half, South Chrisler Avenue. Um, real quickly, I'll point out the applicant name on here. This is an error. This city's not the applicant. It should say, uh, Jose Prito or, um, Top Properties LLC.
That's what ours says.
Okay. Yeah, it, it's right on the staff report. It's just wrong on the, on the, on the... On the PowerPoint.
Okay.
So, um, here's the surrounding zonings for the property. As you could, this is a, a small retail building. It's immediately north of the recently constructed, um, Dollar General store along Chrisler, just north of the railroad there. Um, just south of C Avenue, not quite on the corner. There's a vacant lot there, but in that industrial zone property that, that sits north of, um, the, uh, General Store. And you can see the surrounding neighborhood is a single-family neighborhood. Mostly zone R12, but the use is single-family around there. The comprehensive plan, of course, sees this as, um, an area of residential neighborhood use. And this aerial photo gives a little clearer picture. You can see it in relation to the general stores. New paved parking lot to the south and the vacant lot that abuts narrow C Avenue that comes off of, of Chrisler right there. So, this is that, um, two-unit retail store. So, this may be an industrial zone, but of course, uh, the, the structures here very much look like small retail, uh, uses. Background, um, the request is by Jose Prito, uh, to rezone the property from, uh, I1 Industrial to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Of course, the history, uh, prior to the new UDO, we used to call I1 M1. The property's, he's been M1 since 1965, and, uh, the retail strip center was developed in the 60s. But of course, um, before 1980, we have pyramid zoning, and we allowed, um, lesser zonings in industrial, commercial and residential and whatnot. Uh, background, um, as far as the proposal goes, uh, this is to rezone these, uh, two units, um, our, um, 907 and 907 and a half. Because it's really, as you saw, um, a relatively small building on a small lot, and it's really not adequate for most of the uses that are listed under the industrial category of the code. Further, the applicant, uh, may or is having to turn away potential tenants, uh, because, of course, the, they see a retail building that they like to use, but find out that, you know, it's an industrial building. Physical characteristics of the property, the small blonde strip center sets 30 to 40 feet off the street, uh, across, um, a concrete driving parking surface. Uh, the parking lot is unmarked and contiguous with the street, nearly the entire width of the property's frontage. A paved surface runs along the north side of the building, leading to an even larger paved surface behind the building. In short, the lot is made up of almost entirely impervious surfaces. Characteristics of the area, the property lies in a transition point between single-family residential uses to the northwest, north and east, and the commercial industrial uses that lie to the south and southwest. This small-scale retail here, as well as to the south of the Dollar General, provide a traditional, a corner neighborhood shopping service area within walking distance of a surrounding residential neighborhood. So, as far as the analysis goes, um, as far as its consistency with the strategic plan, and the intention, of course, the city's plan is to, strategic plan is to improve area and neighborhood conditions, and, uh, the comprehensive guiding land use principles that most apply to this is this property is located within an area for neighborhood uses. Now, the, uh, comprehensive plan says these residential areas with nearby small-scale retail, are vision to have that mixture of housing and, and, um, s- such, um, small-scale retail. Sub-area plans, this area hasn't been identified, uh, for any kind of sub-area, um, planning. And as far as the zoning, um, C1 would be perfectly aligned with what I was talking about. Less small-scale retail offices, um, restaurants, banks, personal improvement services, you know, like hair salons, whatnot, uh, daycare centers, uh, government and civic facilities, churches, schools, animal grooming, artist spaces, small repair services, small artisan manufacturing. Uh, currently, of course, it's zoned industrial, which permits, um, churches, government facilities, animal services, artist workspaces, which could, you know, work in a, in a, in a area of that size. But some of the other, um, things such as manufacturing, um, recycle centers, um, laundry services, um, business equipment sales, this would not be adequate for warehousing. As far as historic and archaeological sites, uh, there are no apparent, um, historical or archaeological issues that we could identify with this property. It's not in a floodplain or stream buffer. Um, and of course, um, it's being in an urban infill area. It has all the public utilities. As far as open spaces and landscaping, like I said before, this is a large impervious surface. So, there's very limited possibility of creating green space here or, or do plant, doing plantings anyway in the existing green spaces. Excuse me. Uh, the parking, parking is adequate for the number of required spaces. It just has not been striped, and of course, needs to be striped and signed for handicapped and band-accessible handicap locations. Trash enclosure, any improvements to this building will necessitate a trash enclosure if they're going to have, uh, a trash service with, uh, metal trash bin. There are no public improvements that would be required. And CIP investments have not been identified at this time, right in front of this, uh, property. So, again, here's looking directly at it, and you can see there's very little green space here, and you've got a little bit along the building here, a little bit on the north side. But it's pretty much an impervious paved surface and structure. This, um, gives you the view immediately to the south. This to the southwest. That building is also zoned industrial to the southwest, although it's, um, is lawnmower repair use that's in there right now is properly zoned for that. And you've got your residential uses in the R12 and the surrounding neighborhood. This vacant lot, um, is also I1 and will remain I1. Uh, staff recommends approval of this rezoning, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
So, you're not recommending any green space stuff be added, or we can't do that at this time, or? Because I mean, you said there's very little green space there.
Well, there's no, there's no permit, so there's no, we can't condition the zoning.
Okay.
So...
That was my question. Like, with the zoning change, are there a few more requirements for C2? Like, would paving or barriers or lighting or restrictions?
Everything, everything's triggered by the building permit process.
Okay.
So, any kind of improvements that to be brought up to code are triggered by that process.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Does that include what you mentioned with wheelchair parking, striping, um...
Well, uh, as part of, you know, um, the business license, we can require them to have their handicap striping up to... Up to date in their signage.
Okay.
You don't think we ought to tear up that whole concrete thing and put in a 10 dozen trees? There's no space for much landscaping if we were to be a part of it. It's all hard surface, right?
I mean, they theoretically, I guess, could do some in back, maybe.
Two inches.
Uh, some, make some islands, but again, the, the only way we could trigger that is with some substantial...
Renovation.
Renovation, yeah.
Okay. Will the applicant, sorry, ready? Will the applicant come forward, please? And if you'll state your name and your address for us.
My name is, uh, Jose Prito. My address, 5721 Norris Danny Faly.
Thank you. I guess, uh, just tell us a little bit about why you needed the rezoning change and intentions?
I just get, when I bought the building, I was not sure when it was industrial, and when I got a tenant, asked me if I can, if he can use it for retail. And I, I believe I can, but I was not aware that it was industrial, and I kind of leased it. And now I'm holding my rent with a tenant until I see if I can, uh, change to a, a new sign-in. Yeah, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm doing there.
Yeah, that makes sense. Questions? Yes.
What kind of tenants are you looking for?
Uh, like, you know, I just put, posed, and I was, uh, listed the, the place, and I got tenant that is using for... Like, you know, I just put, posed, and that was listed the place, and I got tenant that is using for a church one side, and the other one they're gonna put some essential oil on that, yeah.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Seeing none. Commissioners, do you have any more questions of the applicant or the city? Closing the public hearing, I would entertain any comments or motions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve case two-three-dash-one-hundred-dash-zero-nine rezoning 907 and 907 and a half South Crystler Avenue from I-1 Industrial to C1 Neighborhood Commercial.
Second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number twenty-three-dash-one-hundred-dash-zero-nine has been approved. Thank you. Case number twenty-three-dash-one-hundred-eleven, rezoning Farmer Street Corridor. Staff report, please.
This is a city-initiated rezoning for the south side of the Farmer Street Corridor. We did the north side a few weeks ago, along with Waldo, and a little bit on College and Main Street. So, as you can see from the vicinity map, I've circled basically an area between Liberty and Nolan, Long Farmer there. These are area that's mostly zoned either C2 Commercial, General Commercial, or it's R-30 PUD, High Density Residential Plan Unit Development right now. Comprehensive plan sees the area as residential urban neighborhood. So, basically, this is our notification area. So, the purple lots are the ones that are part of the request, and the turquoise are the notification area within one hundred and eighty-five feet of those purple lots. The request by the City of Independence is to resume properties 129, 131, 135, 143, and 145 East Farmer, 421, 424, and 425 North Main Street, and 113 and 115 West Farmer Street. And of course, all of this from C2 and R-30 PUD to R-6 Single Family Residential, excuse me. As far as the property histories, prior to 2009, most of the area that was, or the portions that are currently zoned R-30 PUD that used to be called R-4 means the same thing. It was high-density residential. And those properties have been zoned such since about 1965. Of course, prior to 1980, the C2 properties were zoned C3. All the properties included in this proposed rezoning are part of a cluster of single-family uses that is currently zoned C2 or R-30 PUD. Rezoning the area to R-6 will reinforce the single-family nature of this existing neighborhood. Rezoning the legal non-conforming, single-family homes will make them more marketable because non-cash buyers that require mortgages will have less difficulty getting bank financing. Further, without rezoning, existing properties would lose their single-family uses if unoccupied for more than six months. And that's, yeah. Physical characteristics of the property, the neighborhood is made up of a mix of architectural styles from the late eighteen hundreds to the middle of the nineteen hundreds. Most of the single-family residences do appear in relatively good condition. As far as the characteristics of the area, to the north of the Farmer Street Corridor is a mixture of church properties, single-family and multifamily properties, zoned O1, C2, and R-30. On the east, abutting Nolan Road, are vacant lots, previously single-family in use, zoned C2. Properties to the south are zoned C2 and R-30 PUD, but largely single-family residential in use, or on the eastern, in particular, church properties. The area west near Liberty Street is zoned C2 and R-30 PUD, and the side of church properties as well, and single and multifamily homes. As far as the consistency with the city's strategic plan, the application is in keeping with the measures of success for improved housing conditions and to increase median value of owner-occupied housing units. The comprehensive plan guiding principles, most currently applicable to this would be to maintain housing stock within established neighborhoods. And subarea plans, this is within an area that is designated as the downtown redevelopment area. So, the R-6 classification, of course, allows for single-family dwellings, as well as various other uses like churches, schools, government facilities, daycare, seminaries. Currently, some of the properties are zoned R-12 PUD, and that allows for basically some of the same uses, the churches, the schools, government buildings. However, they can only do two-family and above. You can't have a single-family residence in that zoning. C2, General Commercial, of course, allows for a broad variety of things, like retail, and office, and restaurants, and banks, different services, and hotels, daycare centers, nursing homes, churches, government facilities, schools, colleges, and different entertainment supporting facilities, medical services, repair services. Historic and archaeological sites, there are no apparent historic issues with these properties. Public utilities, of course, this is down near the square. This is a long-established residential neighborhood with all utilities servicing the area. It's not in a floodplain or a stream buffer zone. No public improvements, of course, would be associated with this. And currently, there's no CIP investments programmed for this Farmer Street Corridor. So, we're gonna start at the east end, and this is the easternmost house. And then we're proceeding west toward Main. Main is up there at the end of the street. You can see, this is the north side of Main over here, some of the vacant lots. And then, then on up toward the intersection, there are more houses. This is up at Main, looking back to the east, back toward Nolan, down Farmer. And then these are a couple of the houses along the main that would be included in this. And then this is looking northwest, I believe, yep, of that intersection. Well, no, it's not northwest, southwest, southwest, so that's one of the houses, those houses are included as well. This is looking northwest at St. Mary's High School properties. And then this is between Main and Liberty, along Farmer. And then this is a house at the corner of Farmer and Liberty. And then this is looking back down toward the Episcopal Church down there, toward the square. And then this is across the street, on the southwest corner of Liberty and Farmer. And then looking farther west down Farmer, and northwest of Farmer and Liberty, and then back toward the St. Mary's properties. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just from my own understanding, the nature of this city-initiated action is to reinforce and preserve the integrity of a single-family neighborhood.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Come on up, and if you'll state your name and your address, please.
My name is Roxanne Robinson, and I live at 131 East Farmer in Independence.
Thank you.
And I want to talk both ways, I guess, on the rezoning with the R-30 PUD slash C2. On the, on East Farmer, I'm talking about 129, 131, 135, and 143, and 145. I am delighted that this is going to be changed to a R-6, because we all on that street want to be on the same zone. But I don't understand why the, those empty lots across the street wasn't listed to be changed as well. 134, 130, 132, 134, 136, and 138. We all want to be, like I said, on the same zoning, because in two or three years, we don't want someone to come in and to, because it's gonna be still C2, to be changed and put apartment buildings or something like that over there. So, though, that's my concern. We all just want to be on R-6 in that area.
Thank you. I'm gonna let Stuart and Brian answer that question for you.
What we're trying to do is correct, do corrective rezonings for existing properties, so people don't, are not running into problems, like I said, getting a mortgage, being able to get a building permit to build a new garage on the back of their house. That is what we're trying, that was a subject of what we were trying to deal with here.
So, the empty lots that are across, what she's asking about, why would we not include those in the same voice? Same zoning change. I know there's a reason, I just can't remember it.
We, we were trying to fix a problem, which is people being able to, to be able to stabilize the existing housing stock and allow people to get financing and permits. It would probably involve much more of a neighborhood meeting, or.
Would almost be.
To, 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 to include.
Well, if somebody came and bought the property and wanted to put something there, and it didn't fall, you'd come back to us, right? You asked a very good question evidently.
Madam Chair.
I, I think.
As staff consider, if I recall correctly, we made a decision in the last round that we would not permit the ideal to stand in the way of progress. In other words, we'll stabilize what we've got, and we'll deal with the vacant lots in a separate matter. Ideally, we would like all to be, of course, but we're gonna get done as quickly as much as possible, and then we'll come back to the vacant lots in a separate billing.
And I understand what you're saying on that, but I just don't want nothing to fall through the cracks we're in the meanwhile.
It was not falling through the staff's crack, I can assure you.
Yeah, but I don't want that to be sold, and somebody else comes in, by right now being a R-30 PUD slash C2, and somebody can go in there and build whatever they want, when the rest of the Farmer, uh, Farmer Street is going to hopefully be changed to R-6. We want all of East Farmer to be R-6.
I think you're gonna hear from staff in a much better explanation than I offered, which was merely a recapitulation of what we discussed in the first round.
I think we were trying to avoid forcing zoning changes on people at this time. We were trying to fix a problem. And I think, I think if you're gonna readdress the issue of, of how the undeveloped lots are zoned, that's more of a, a longer conversation that's, would need to occur.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say that part again, that'd be a long, say that, what did he just say at the end? That part at the end?
It's basically a separate situation, so what they're bringing to us is the properties that have been notified, and so that we can easily fix this problem. The, the properties that are vacant are like a whole nother set that they can deal with at another time. Now, one of the things we can do is recommend that you do it.
Yeah, if I can kind of answer that question maybe a little bit more clearly. You know, the goal isn't really to start force, forcing people into the rezoning. We get a little bit into some legal trouble if we start trying to do that. We would actually be better suited when those properties come in, when they do want to bring something, develop that site. That's the better time to do that, not during this process. The goal here, as Brian was stating, was really just to correct those areas that we know are wrong. And so, hopefully, that kind of gives you a little bit more clarity as to why we try not to do that. There's been, that type of thing has happened in the past. It's something we try to avoid.
I think the good news is it has their attention, as well as ours.
And mine, because I feel that something's going on, and then I'm just me, and I don't want nothing later on. I want it to be on record. You know, so when this other thing that's probably gonna be coming up, is knowing that it's on record that I told you so.
Perfect.
So, that's what I wanted to let, you know, to know that. I want, again, all of Farmer Street to be under R-6.
Thank you. You've said it out loud. It is recorded, and we're, we're watching.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address. And you're tall, so you're gonna have to.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to.
My name is Kenneth Morris, and my address is 508 North Liberty Street. Um, it's been a several years that we've been here, uh, been here. Um, we first moved to Independence about eight years ago. There was a gentleman came in and wanted to turn the football field in Saint Mary's into a commercial too. So I know Mark Twain said the older I get, the better my memory becomes, and things that never happen. But I do remember certain occasions when we walked in with Brian here, and, um, and we were, that was a long, that was a really involved thing. It was months, um, and finally, I think the gentleman withdrew his application. So I'm here to communicate for what you just, uh, I watched the video of your last meeting, and that came up and sort of separated that from what I remember, because it was some urgency or whatever. It was a person was applying for it in terms of refinancing or whatever. Um, but anytime since that experience, eight years ago, I see a yellow sign that's anywhere here where I live, it gets, definitely gets my attention. So I'm here to recommend that you do what the city's recommended in terms of getting Farmer to be all the same, um, zoning. And, uh, I thought that it was all agreed, but now I remember that it was gonna be a study, it would be a study, it would be done on the vacant lot, but, um, it definitely sounds like that's, um, something that has your attention. So I just, my coming forward is to recommend that you do that. I don't know if it's anything that forced her hand, but, um, my neighbor here was, um, in addition with the other properties, but, um, certainly, I know that telling people, moving to Independence is one of the areas that's, uh, some affordable housing. I know a lot of people, uh, since we live here, that have moved to Kansas City. And, um, so it's always, uh, something of concern getting people to live here, especially with what's going on in terms of weeks all changing, i.e. getting smaller, et cetera, uh, so that I know that the city gets some, some, um, revenues in that. But I definitely, homeownership is a hallmark of this society and communities, and also personal responsibility and all the factors that you all know, getting people, especially in single-family houses. So I hope that you'll take up the remaining lots as soon, that this is something that you'll recommend to...
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Okay, hearing no one else want to speak. Commissioners, do you have any more questions of the city, who is the applicant, or comments? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any other further comments, questions, or I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
In a matter of case, 23-100-111, rezoning for Farmer Street Quad, uh, Corridor uh, from C2 General Commercial and R12, R30, R30 slash PUD High Density Residential and Planning Unit to R6 Single Family Home, I move for approval as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-100-11 has been approved.
Madam Chair, can I ask, say one comment?
Yeah.
I just want to thank Roxanne, uh, as a senior citizen of our great city. You really, you came and spoke what was important to you, and I just applaud you for that.
Yep, thank you very much. And we're excited, we're just cleaning up the neighborhood. It's all one zone. All right. Next case, number 23-850-01, Historic Landmark Designation for 114 South Nolan Road. City, will you give us your report?
Yes, this is a request by, uh, Charles and Amy Chris, Chris Droliger, excuse me, I can't pronounce that, of Silver Heart Inn, to rezone the property of 1114 South Nolan Road from R6 Single Family Residential to R6 HL, which is Single Family Residential with historic landmark designation. Um, you can see the, uh, property there, uh, shown on the west side of Nolan Road, just north of, uh, 23rd Street. You've probably driven by it a million, million times, there's a sign outside that says Silver Heart Inn. Uh, that was a bed and breakfast that was approved probably 12 years ago or so, uh, and it's been in operation ever since then. This property is at, uh, 1114 South Nolan Road. It's a 3,700, 3,800 square foot building known as the Stone Gamble House. It lies just on about a half an acre of property. The original portion of the two-story dwelling is clad with textured stucco. House has an open front porch supported by two sets of paired, uh, colossal octagonal-shaped columns that support the pediment centered around the front facade. The columns sit atop a stepped brick foundation, uh, project over the front entry and the second, and the second-story balcony is part of the cross gable composite slate roof. Uh, the gables oriented to the north and south display the decorative returns that differentiate them from the front facade's triangular pediment. The brick chimney projects from the roof and lies offset to the south. You will, uh, the front east elevation comprises a decorative wood-framed door surrounded by divided light transit and light and side lights. Uh, this supports the decorative corbel, support the second-story balcony also serves as part of the first story, first-floor door surround. Second, uh, secondary door sits directly above the main first-floor entry and also surrounded by similar divided light transit side lights and door surrounds. Original four-by-four double-hung sash windows can be found symmetrically placed along the front and second story of the front facade, south and north elevations. These windows are protect, are protected by aluminum storm windows. Before I, uh, go into this any further, I will, uh, show you the location. Uh, there's the aerial photograph, it's the rectangle that's in black. This is the zoning map, all this area that's basically north of the 23rd Street Corridor is owned single-family, except for a few brown spots, which are multifamily. This is the comprehensive plan, does recommend, commercial use along Nolan Road. Okay, this is the front of the building, uh, and you can see that some of the things that we had talked about. Uh, there is a two, two-story clad, two-story shed roof addition and a one-story sunroom on clapboard siding on the rear elevation. Rear, rear additions have contemporary vinyl siding and wood. Uh, the rear elevation is clad with wood siding and lies on a concrete block foundation. One-story shed additions can also be found on the back, on the back elevation. This elevation is clad with vinyl clapboard siding. A screen porch sits on the southwest corner of the building. Interior features are not factored into the local designation process. The house does retain many of the original 19th and early 20th century architectural features. A single-story cottage and garage located to the west and southwest of the building, along with the business signage, are not included as part of this proposed designation. Okay, and there's the property history that I went, which I just went through. This is the front of the house at night, uh, during holidays, you've been by there, it's how it's all lit up. This is the rear of the house, and it talks about the, uh, addition onto the back. And then it's more the rear yard area. And this is the three-car garage that's directly behind the building. And then this is the small cottage that's in the southwest part of the property that's not included with this designation. This is another picture of the back, sort of the backyard area, courtyard, and then this is the patio area west of the house. Okay, and this is the house that's immediately north of the applicant's site. And here we're looking north up South Nolan. And this is on the east side of South Nolan, across from the site, another house across from the site. And then this is the house that's immediately south of the applicant's site. Okay, based upon the property's historic affiliation with the Stone, Dickey, and Gamble families and its architectural history, uh, there is significant documentation to support the designation as a lo, as a local landmark on the local register of historic places. Therefore, staff did recommend to the Heritage Commission to support the recommendation to the Planning Commission via a resolution for the local historic designation at 1114 South Nolan. And then at its, uh, April 4th, 2023 meeting, the Heritage Commission reviewed the application for consideration as a local and landmark, and unanimously, six, zero, approved the recommendation for designation to the Planning Commission. And then, uh, based upon the pop, of the property's historic affiliation with the Stone, Dickey, and Gamble families and its architectural history, there is significant documentation to support the designation as a local landmark on the historic, on the local register of historic places. Staff recommends to the Planning Commission to approve the recommendation of the Heritage Commission to the City Council to support the designation of this property as an Independence Local Landmark, and to alter the current zoning map to add the Historic Landmark HL overlay to the current R6 Single Family zoning. The property is on R6 Single Family Residential. This Historic Landmark Designation will require the addition of the HL overlay added to the existing R6 zoning, uh, city zoning map on the zoning map. This change does not alter the use or any associated zoning requirements related to single-family zoning.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Do I need to bring the applicant up?
Excuse me?
Do I need to bring the applicant up, or...
Yeah, the applicant here, they, if you want to ask them questions...
Why don't you, do you want to both come up, or? And just state your names and your address, please.
Charles, this is 114 South Nolan Road, Independence, Georgia.
Thank you. Oh, will you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do. Thank you. You're official. Thank you. You gonna tell us about the process?
Well, uh, the previous owners of the Silver Heart Inn had done expensive work on historical, uh, a couple of blocks in the house and had been backed up by tons of history. They never got around to the historical landmark piece, so we decided...
Um, thank you. We decided to move forward with that. We feel that the property is a huge part of Independence, has been for many, many years. I'm just lucky enough to live there and do repairs on the place, you know, when that, that happens. But I love the Silver Heart Inn, we were guests here for four or five years and just absolutely love the house. The architect work inside, gorgeous, remains the same for the 1850s style in the front of the home. So it's really a cool place to be.
Thank you. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Questions, anyone? Nope, thank you. It's a big deal, it's a lot of work to get this designation. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And any commissioners, any comments, concerns, congratulations?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Congratulations to this applicant, this couple, and this application. I yield to Commissioner H Wiley.
I make a motion to approve the resolution by the Independence Heritage Commission in designating the overlay of historic landmark for the address of 114 South Nolan Road, the Silver Heart Inn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number 23-850-01, Historic Landmark Designation has been approved. And congratulations, because that is a very big deal, and a very big deal for the city. We get one more. Well done. Thank you. Okay. Next case, case number 23-400-06, Short-Term Rental for 646 South Lake Drive. Staff report, please.
As you can see on the vicinity map here, this is a, um, a short-term rental off of, uh, uh, Lake Drive, just south, couple of blocks south of US 24 Highway. Applicants of Jacob Chandler and Luke Went. So they're on the west side of the road, uh, just in front of that parking lot there. At 646, it's a neighborhood of single-family homes. And you see the driveway there, and also the existing gravel pull-off area. And, uh, the lawn there of that house. Okay. This shows the potential parking locations, so you've got the garage, you've got driveway parking, and then, of course, the pull-off area is indicated here. There's a two here, two... And then the evacuation plan, slash floor plan for this, uh, building. You can see the, the, this, I guess it's not an A-frame, but sort of that narrower at the top type thing. You can see the smaller second floor there off to the right. And then here's the floor plan without the evacuation, um, arrows on it. So as far as the nearest short-term rentals, you can see where they are in relation, um, mostly to the south of this property. Um, quite a distance, south of Truman Road. The closest ones, anyway. So the zoning history of this property, it's currently zoned R12 Two-Family Residential. A former designation, of course, before 2009, was R2, meaning the same thing. Property conditions, uh, the electrolytes, uh, oasis located at 646 South, um, Lake Drive was constructed as a single-family home decades ago and continues to be a single-family residence in use and design. As far as the physical characteristics of the property, um, the 1,884 square foot, uh, two-story, uh, single-family residence sits on a 0.14 acre lot. The house has three bedrooms, there's a master bedroom with a bathroom on the first floor, and two other bedrooms on the second floor near another bathroom. Uh, the kitchen and living areas, of course, are on the first floor. Um, lastly, the resident, uh, residence also has a fenced patio and a hot tub there on the west side in the rear. Characteristics of the neighborhood, uh, the surrounding, mostly single-family neighborhood, is a, small houses, small narrow lots. Uh, most of the houses are post-1920 cottages and bungalows. Lake Drive, narrow, lacks curb sidewalks. As far as analysis of the parking, has a single-car driveway and garage. Three cars could be parked on-site, including one in the garage and, oh, and you could also have one in front of the house. Uh, this pull-off area in front of the house would need to be paved. Unruly guests and security. Uh, applicants will screen all, screen all guests ahead of time and let neighbors know how to reach managers if there's ever a problem. Excuse me. So, um... So, um, there's an analysis of the, they're meeting the short-term rental requirements. So the applicant is, has to address the following topics. Uh, the first topic is noise monitoring. Uh, the applicant will install, uh, the minute noise monitoring system, which will, um, notify the applicant if the decimal level is above eighty-five dB for more than five continuous, continuous minutes. Uh, the system shall be installed in the central part of the house, uh, such as the living room, kitchen, and dining room area. A trash removal is scheduled to be picked up weekly on Tuesdays, uh, by the Ted's Trash Service. Uh, property listing, uh, will, it will only be listed on Airbnb website. Business operations and security, um, it will be responsible for most of the business operations, including site security, uh, screening customers, and coordinating bookings. The city's short-term rental checklist. The form was completed by the applicant, uh, covering licensing, future inspections, insurance, onsite information posting, and so forth. Fire safety, evacuation, evacuation plan has been submitted along with, uh, floor plans for the house, as you saw. Uh, the fire escape plan must be posted, of course, per code. Uh, city inspection, the property has been inspected by the fire inspector and it passed the initial, uh, short-term, uh, rental fire and safety inspection. And as noted earlier, it, um, meets the density limitations on, um, short-term rentals within a given area, as was shown on the earlier map. Excuse me. So this is, uh, standing in Lake Drive, looking directly west of the property, or west at the property. Uh, this is the house immediately to the southwest. This is to the southeast in this sort of an access area. You can see the little lake that's right there off to the, the left. This is the house across the street, as well as, uh, a view looking northward up, um, Lake Drive, back toward twenty-four Highway. Staff recommends approval of this short-term rental with the following conditions. Number one, the short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article three, Chapter five of the city code. The occupation license numbers shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. Number two, the business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section fourteen, four twenty-four, I think your reports have four twenty, it's four twenty-four of the city code. Uh, number three, the maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to two, six adults, or ten total persons. Uh, number four, uh, pave the pull-off area in front of the house. And number five, a noise monitoring system shall be installed in the central part of the house and activated. The good neighbor guidelines and, uh, evacuation plan and other notices need to be posted properly. And this needs to be done prior to approval of the business license.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff before we bring the applicant forward?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Brian, you did say that the street was narrow, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, if you look here, you can see.
That's your truck on there, right?
Yep, there's my truck.
And is that the paved area that needs to be paved that we're seeing right there in front, like that picture of you?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the, well, that's the end of the driveway there, it's actually paved.
Oh, it is paved, okay.
But the pull-off area, I believe, is not. Yeah, see, it's sort of, or it maybe was paved, but it's now gravelly now.
It's gravelly, okay. So that's the area that you recommend's got to be paved, so they can get three cars in One in the garage, one in the driveway, one in that area?
You can get one in the garage, two in the driveway. He showed two in the pull-off area. I'd say more like one in the pull-off area.
I'd say one in the pull-off, okay. I just wanted to make sure, so yes, that looks like what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Will the applicant come forward, please, or applicants? State your names and address, please.
Uh, Jacob Chancellor and four hundred West South Side Boulevard, Independence, Missouri, six-four-zero-five-five.
Thank you.
Luke Went, four hundred West South Side Boulevard, Independence, Missouri, six-four-zero-five-five.
Thank you. Just tell us a little bit about the project, what you intend and.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, we, um, we bought this house originally wanting to renovate it and just kind of magic up the property, really. We ended up putting in a ton of money into remodeling it, new floors, new countertops, um, new appliances, um, fresh coat of paint on all walls. Uh, built a six-foot white privacy fence around the backyard to be able to host a hot tub there, uh, with gates for the back and to the front. Um, and, uh, yeah, so Airbnb is just a new commodity in the city and we noticed that there aren't a whole lot that are really fulfilling their duty to provide a wonderful environment for guests, uh, by providing new appliances, um, a hot tub, uh, games, uh, nice TVs, these kinds of things. And, uh, we thought it would be a really neat little project.
Thank you.
I would say, so we spent a significant investment on the property. Originally, we were ignorant of the permit process, uh, became enlightened from a letter. It's been a wonderful experience so far. Uh, my sister now lives across the street. We networked with our neighbors. Everyone has our phone number and knows how to get ahold of us. She cleans for us, uh, so that has been really beneficial to her as well. Since we have both come into the neighborhood, we have spent quite a lot making the area look much nicer, as you can see from the pictures of before and after. We've improved how the yard looks. This year, we've planted three hundred tulips with fifteen hundred more to come. Uh, and my sister and me have built a front garden in front of her house as well, the little blue house across the street. Uh, so we are very committed to beautifying the neighborhood and we would like to continue to do so. If you look on the Airbnb website, you can see that our review rating is a four-point-nine-five out of five stars. We are one of the best-reviewed Airbnbs in the greater Kansas City area. There is a lot of testament, a lot of positivity. I recently learned that a couple that met there as strangers have recently gotten married as well, so we are in the business of creating lovely memories. Also, we've had some gatherings there ourselves. It's been a wonderful experience for us. Still haven't made any money at this because, again, we put a significant investment into this, but, um, this is what we want to do with our future. Uh, we are all about the Independence twenty forty plan. We do plan on getting more short-term vacation rentals with permits in the future, uh, and this is, this is where we're starting.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
So you guys are doing all this yourselves, so basically if there's a noise problem or anything, you guys are, I, I think you both lived in Independence, right?
What was that?
Yes, we are both at the same address. Uh, we're, we're in a relationship together as well.
So I'm saying you're probably what, ten, fifteen minutes away or something like that?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, so if there's any problems, any problems with the noise monitor?
We have six, five cameras on site.
Okay.
As far as the noise monitoring thing goes, uh, my newt is a relatively new company. Um, they're a Swedish company, they don't even have a phone number listed. So it has been, when we got our letter, immediately we jumped on the noise monitoring when we realized that was something we needed to do. So, um, they never sent us our device, uh, we canceled and got a refund, and there's the second company named Wind Technologies, um, and they are a noise monitoring, as well as a smoke-detecting device, um, to see if people are smoking cannabis, cigarettes, vapes, um, and they are about a one week out from giving us their device. Uh, we got it about a week ago, so.
We'll have that on the twenty-eighth.
Okay. I just want to make sure you guys were good with all that, so.
Absolutely.
And no problem with getting the area paved in front?
So the only problem has been it's paving season right now. Um, my father's a general contractor, he lives two hours away, though. He'll be coming in two weeks to pave the front yard. I brought a proposal if anyone wants to see it from him.
No, I just want to make sure it's okay if you guys can get that done.
We're going to get it done, yes.
Okay.
You lined up some good family help.
My dad, too, has also helped a lot. My dad's a journeyman carpenter and has helped us a lot throughout the project.
Nice.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want some clarification. You have a really high rating on Airbnb, but you are not approved for a short-term rental yet.
Yes.
So can you tell me, obviously you were operating without approval, um, can you tell me maybe one or two things you've learned by not following the rules?
We have learned that the city actually collects less tax than Airbnb has been collecting on our behalf, um, so that will be nice for our future guests. We want to be in the right. We didn't know about the permit process.
We have another license that we thought was the license that you were supposed to have. Um, turns out that there's actually two more licenses, so there's just permits and then.
We do have our LLC and our insurance and I, I thought we had everything taken care of when we got into this. I, I wouldn't have invested ninety thousand dollars with Jacob, um, had I known that we weren't in the right. We would have taken care of that part first, uh, all those months ago when we started. We purchased this home back in March and then, um, rehabbed it and finished that project in middle of July. That's how long we've been operating then, since then.
State that, repeat the date of acquisition.
Uh, March.
Uh, March.
Eighteenth of twenty twenty-two, my birthday. Well, a week after my birthday. It was supposed to actually be on my birthday. It was going to be a really great birthday present and then, of course, how buying house works.
Yeah, we're, we're not trying to be sneaky. We, we don't want to operate without a permit. Um, also for our safety, too, we, we want to be protected, uh, by the city. We want, we want you guys tracking, um, we're incorporated, like I said, too, so we are operating as a limited liability company.
We appreciate your honesty. And yeah, the, um, hotel tax or, not the hotel tax, the Airbnb tax is very helpful to the city, so we appreciate it.
Acquisition date, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Have you read the ordinance and all the regulations?
Yes.
Pursuant to operation?
Yes, I've thoroughly read it. I do believe we're in compliance with everything.
You have no trouble with any of the product, uh, regulations?
It is expensive to pave the front yard or the front pull-off and most of the other houses in the neighborhood have gravelled driveways, but it is okay. We are perfectly willing to get it paved.
In terms of the parking, you can have one car in the garage, two in the driveway, directly in front of the garage, and how many cars on the street?
One, is what we were, one is the only thing.
One on the street. So four cars, so why, why are we requiring them to? Not that this is the direction I intended to go, but to staff, why, are we requiring them to pave this pull-off? Or do they have a choice of putting grass and not paving it?
Let's see, um.
It's six to ten people, so you don't probably need that extra.
Six adults, four minors.
If you're going to use it, you have to pave it. It looks like you don't necessarily need the pull-off area.
Right.
But if you're going to use the pull-off area, it would need to be paved. So you could either get rid of it, I suppose. Because you would have, if you were going to let one person park in the garage, and then you would have area for two in the driveway.
So the question becomes, do you intend to use that pull-off or would you prefer to make it a part of the yard?
We are going to use the pull-off. I will say the pull-off, I just measured it yesterday, getting another quote with my dad, it is twenty-six feet long, so there is plenty of room for two cars to fit up front.
Do you intend to do the paving?
We will have it paved within the next month.
How many times have police officers or anyone to quell any activities at the house happened since you've operated?
There have been, there has been one break-in when we did not have a guest, um.
I'm not counting that, obviously.
And then we have had a party, um, I'm not sure how long ago, maybe six months ago, that grew quite large and we did call the police and the party did get shut down because of our efforts, though. We, we saw everything on the blink cameras. I think that we have only had one police incident. Um, as soon as they arrived, the party was shut down. I will say we also have a relationship.
What was the disposition on the guests that were there who started the party, knowing full well that that's not permitted?
The police did not charge anyone that night, um.
Did you ebbek them?
Yes.
Immediately?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, they have since been banned from the platform and I was, I was saying I have a personal connection, two of them actually, to the Independence Police Department, so they have.
Other than that, what other police interaction have happened?
I don't believe there have been any other police.
It, it was just the two.
Well, it was just the one.
And then the one party.
And what have been your outreach to your neighbors?
They have our phone numbers, um, we stay in touch with them. Sometimes we buy them small presents, like my neighbor John had a tattered cheese flag, so I replaced it for him. Uh, like I mentioned, we bought two thousand tulips recently, we've got three hundred in the ground, uh, we're spreading fifteen hundred more across the neighborhood. Uh, we do have a relationship with most of the surrounding neighbors and then my sister, of course, lives across the street, so I'm always in touch with her. I should also mention that I've taken it upon myself to mow the community lot across the street, so I do the yard maintenance over there as well. So, um, we, we spend a lot of time in the neighborhood and we've made it like home to ourselves as well, especially since I have family over there.
Clearly, you've invested in the neighborhood and that's, that's a, uh, commendable thing. On, um, you did, with your, being on Airbnb, did you put the two-night minimum? That'll help parties.
I'm sorry, uh, what is the, what is a two-night minimum? Is that required?
For Airbnb.
She was just saying it would help the party.
It helps.
Oh, I understand. Um, we could try, I've never thought of doing it that way. I will say that most of our bookings are one-night. Um, I've learned through this process that Kansas City and greater Kansas City is a very transient city. Most of our guests are from out of town, most of them. When they're not from out of town, we screen them heavily, um, especially if they have like an eight-one-six number. And I try very hard to discourage them from even booking in the first place, laying out a number of house rules and gently reminding them that we will call the police and that we have no trouble doing so. And that has deterred, I believe, many other incidents from happening like that party we did have some six months ago. I think it would be pretty damaging to us to have a two-night minimum because a great deal of our guests are just passing through because we're a transient city. They're like going from California to the east coast or Colorado to New Hampshire or whatever it may be, north, south, east, west, they're always stopping in Kansas City.
But on, on that note there, we do put twice in our messages, in our messages to them, um, right when they book, they get an initial message that says there are no parties allowed, your, your reservation will be canceled if we do believe there is a party going on. They are reminded of this on the day of their check-in when they get their check-in instructions, that there are no parties allowed, there are no more than. that there are no parties allowed, there are no more than four cars allowed on the property at any given time, um, and no more than eight guests allowed at any given time, which is now being altered, well, from six with four kids, type of, um, type of activity. So, we do make it apparent to these people that it is going to be shut down, and that has extremely limited the amount of things going on that we find to be inappropriate. But, yes, the moment we do see on any of our five cameras that there are more than these amount of cars, there are more, there are people flooding in at odd hours of the night, we do cancel those reservations and shut those people down.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to piggyback on what she said. There have been, I'll say many, um, short-term rental applicants in here. Majority have added the two-night process, or, uh, applicant stay. I, I would suggest you actually look at it and try it. I think you might be surprised. They have been very, um, satisfied with that rule.
I am not totally against that at all, especially on Fridays and Saturdays. To make Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays a two-night minimum between all three of those days, because one hundred percent of the parties that have happened have happened on a Friday or Saturday, and that would absolutely deter them.
Well, I think the other thing, just from a selfish point, um, we want people to come and stay in Independence and do things in Independence, and a two-night makes that more realistic, so...
Okay.
There is no requirement that there be a two-night.
Of course.
And, as far as parties go, you had one incident, and you immediately evicted them.
Yes.
Therefore, I don't know to what extent it will benefit you one way or the other one night, two-night. That, that's a matter of personal operation. Uh, I, I just appreciate your candor, your forthrightness, and your understanding that operating a short-term rental in Independence or in the other city is a privilege. It's a licensing process. And for those who operate short-term rentals in a neighborhood, it behooves them to be a good neighbor. It appears that, in spite of the licensing or the failure to license, you appear to have been, by your presentation, a good neighbor. Uh, I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there, thank you. Go ahead, you can sit down. Thank you, though. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Okay. Hearing none. Commissioners, any more questions of the applicants? The public portion of this hearing is closed. I would entertain any other comments or motion.
I'll repeat it. I, I respect their candor. I appreciate their understanding of the privilege of operating a business. If, ordinarily, if there are neighborhood oppositions, they will be here in droves. It appears, Madam Chair, in spite of the fledgling beginning, that we have a, probably, an excellent application before us.
Okay.
Uh, and I know Commissioner H. Wiley probably has a comment.
My, my comment is, it's a good application. Thanks for taking care of the problems quickly, which is really helpful, and thanks for getting to know your neighbors. I, for me, it's helpful that they have a sister across the street.
For us, too. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve Case twenty-three dash four-hundred dash oh-six, short-term rental, six-four-six South Lake Drive, with recommendations by staff.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Can we get two seconds? I yield.
All right, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman McClain.
Yes.
Case number twenty-three dash four-hundred dash zero-six, short-term rental, has been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And again, thank you for the honesty. We appreciate that.
Well, Ash, you, you have a short-term rental community here in Independence, and I know you're doing the best you can to operate well. Tell your friends to come out of the shadows. Hey? Thank you.
All right. Is there anything that you have for us that we need to know? Next meeting is May sixteenth?
Madam Chair, I will be out of town on May sixteenth.
Okay.
Just FYI.
Not even a call-in?
I don't think so. I don't know if I can...
I think, uh, Commissioner L. Wiley might have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, several weeks ago, you mentioned a training. Um, I know we're gonna have an additional new planning commission member, so I'd like to make a recommendation that, um, Stuart kinda mentioned there was a notebook that could be created, um, or Jeremy, we'd love to have you do the training. Really, for me, it would be some of those more, um, we know C-tos, you know, PUB, we, we know those. Um, but maybe some of those more, uh, obscure zonings that we should or could do a little education on, so...
I'm always up for that. I need your pressures.
Sure, we can certainly work with planning staff, uh, to come up with that. Do you know what the timeline is on your new member?
Perhaps the next meeting.
Okay. So, soon.
So, soon, so, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll work with planning staff, uh, and, uh, get some ideas going, and, uh, we'll get that for you soon.
Okay. In the meantime, we do have a packet we could create from the past two years' trainings, right?
We used to hand out or provide, uh, three-ring binders with the code and that sort of thing to new members, and I don't know if we stopped that process or not, if some of the older members have gotten that and new members have not.
Maybe I can find mine.
And you still meet with them, right? You sit down in a meeting and...
Well, I know the, uh, the Rick and meets with the chairman and vice chairman, but not other staff, other, uh, members of the board.
So, they don't go like, "Did you go through the mini-training?" Oh, I did.
Apparently, they do provide the, uh, newbies with the, with the packet of information. Did you not get one?
Okay. We need a training and a packet. I'll try to search for mine.
It's been here for this case. Two-three-day, one-hundred-dash-zero-four.
It was withdrawn.
It was withdrawn.
Gas station.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, withdrawn. I'm so sorry. I hope we were at least entertaining. No results.
It was the very first one.
It was the very first one.
And we're gonna get another letter? Yeah, they'll have to re-apply. They, they'll have to make the application, it's like a group. Have an application.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's all right. That's a pride. We thought you were there, you couldn't find it, so we must have do things like, so...
Oh, so sorry. Well, like I said, hopefully, we at least entertained you a little bit.
You did.
Yeah, that's true. All right. If there's nothing else for the good of the country and the city, this meeting is adjourned at eight-twenty.
How?